I just started thinking. I'm trying to think of the last one. 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 I'm trying to think of the last one.
Mr. Chief, is he not going to be here? Is he sick? How far from that door? How are you, the big guy?
Oh, he's fine.
How many of your words are there?
Yeah, mine on.
Bill?
Oh, yeah, here.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to call the regular meeting to order, please. Steve, do you have anything to report about the closed session?
Yes, Mayor, the council's in closed session this evening for conference of legal counsel on existing litigation, and there's no action to report.
Thank you. Do we have the roll call, please, Liz? Council members Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Campion?
Present.
Powers? Here. Councilmember Cruz, you have a little something you wanted to say before we get this meeting going?
I did, I just wanted to have a big welcome to the Boy Scouts of Troop 598 to hear this evening to see how a government runs. Welcome. This is actually part of their working towards the award of Eagle Scout. Welcome.
Welcome. Good to see you, Liz. Okay, we're going to have the flag salute and first of all, a few minutes of a silent prayer, please. Remember all those "West Fortunate" and "Those Are Away From Home" here on the holidays. And since it's your last council meeting, Sandy, I'm going to have you do the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation from the gods, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the city clerk had to leave for a second, so I am going to read the video statement. The meeting at the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on cable, Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.dac.bot.facmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city website at www.c.i.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address counsel should fill out a speaker identification in the corner back there and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing city counsel and state your name for the record. Okay, counsel, do we have any agenda approval additions and or deletions? None?
I have one. I think it's probably going to be a sentence, I don't remember. Can't hear you. G2, I believe.
Okay, could you speak into your microphone, mister?
My phone's G2.
G2?
I don't think it's working.
I don't either. G2, okay.
It's a contract.
Say that again?
I guess that makes a difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not on, it's...
Usually only go one direction if I'm getting that off.
It just seemed like it was very...
Okay. So now we're to public presentation, the community of character responsibility. And Barbara, you're going to present that?
I think Sue Roberts.
Oh, Sue, you're going to present that? There you go, both of you.
And?
To Makesh Patel, where are you? Are you out there somewhere? Hello?
Please, and we will allow you to take this presentation with everything. I don't know, is it on? There it goes. My teacher voice, I think you can still hear me, though, right?
Right.
Okay, very good. Anyway, we have a, we have a, an award for responsibility to give tonight, and this is to Makesh Patel. Patel, excuse me, I'm sure. Is Winona here? Winona Cassidy? No, not here, okay. Well, Barbara and I are happy to do this, and I'd like to read the narrative that Winona Cassidy presented for Makesh. Makesh Patel demonstrates responsibility in our community in many ways. He has taken on the responsibility of creating and maintaining the Galt Community Alliance Calendar to benefit our entire community. He also participates in the Real Men's and the Galt Sunrise Rotary Clubs. Whenever Makesh takes on a project, you can depend on him to complete it. Makesh and his family also prepare 200 sandwiches every week to feed the hungry in Sacramento. Makesh Patel is truly a model of responsibility in the Galt community, and he was nominated by Winona Cassidy. And we're really happy to give this to you, Makesh, well deserved, and you want to... (Inaudible). Really appreciate getting this, and for me, this is more of a, to Galt is like a family, and I've been here, I've had my business here for almost five years now, and pretty much know all my customers by name. And everything I can do, I do to Galt. I spend more time here than I do there, actually. And a lot of you see me around town, and I walk out of my store and I can't get back in for like 15, 20 minutes because I run into somebody and they want to talk about something. And I just, I'm not going to give up what I'm doing, going to keep it up, and hopefully I can do more. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I have kind of a surprise one I'm going to give. just wanted to thank Sandy very much for all of her time serving here at the City of Galt. She's been a good friend and a heck of a worker. She started here February of 1990 as an associate planner, and she, then she decided to leave the City of Galt in October 1994, but she just couldn't live without us. So shortly thereafter, she returned. She worked her way through the entire planning series and ultimately promoted to Community Development Director in July of 2012. Throughout her career, Sandy has been committed to making Galt a great place to live, and she has many friends here in the community and lots of past and present council members, and we just want to thank you for all of your service and want to present you with your 25-year flag.
Yeah, we know.
It's just, it's been an honor and a privilege to work for the City this long. I've worked with a lot of very talented and dedicated, hardworking people, and always had the support of council, the management team here in Galt, and I leave the city in very good hands with the staff that we have, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're going to adjourn for a few minutes out into the back so we can have a little cake and... We just couldn't let you get away, so anybody is invited to go out in the back and have some Sandy cake.
We forgot to tell you that, didn't we?
So I'll have to take a picture. You want to take a picture of the cake?
It's out there. We'll let you know.
Public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Al Baldwin?
Good evening, everybody. Al Baldwin, yes, I'm the concerned citizen of Galt, been this way for 15 to 20 years who ran the, played High York County. It's a community of character, and you saw one of them tonight to get an award. This is what we do. But tonight, I want to say thank you to a wonderful woman. She was at the Galt Area Historical Society's swearing-in of new officers. She did an excellent job, and I, I can't say it's the best because it looks like it was the best, but I can't remember all of them, so this is the best I've ever heard. And I think she did a wonderful job, and it's Liz's acquire. And Liz, I want to thank you on behalf of the Galt Area Historic Society for coming and doing that. And also, I'm up here just to wish everybody a wonderful year next year. We've had a great year this year, a lot of challenges. I've had a lot of help from some of you up there, and I appreciate that. Jason, and Kurt, and, oh, Mark, you know. And actually, speaking of Mark real quick, he's been a real help with the roundtable, getting it pushed in Galt. I have no idea if it's going to go ahead or not, but the Galt does have a roundtable where the train used to be on at the engine and it'd be turning around, very similar to another city very close by that's been very popular. And we're still trying to push for it, not in that site over here in Old Town, but close to us. And Mike and Mary Lou have done a great job, and I appreciate you asking me for your help because it really was good. Barbara, she's been in with this youth council, and she's done a bang-up job, and I appreciate all the things you do for them and what I can do for you. Thank you again, thank you, have a great year. It's going to be a wonderful year, it's going to be a bang-up year, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Al. Andrew Conley?
O-N-L-E-Y.
Good evening, city council members. My name's Andrew Conley. I'm a great citizen of this wonderful little town of Galt. I've lived here for over 10 years with my parents, and now I've become a homeowner this last year and a half, and I live right over off G Street. So that's why I'm coming to tonight's meeting. First, I want to thank you for giving me the chance to voice my concerns of not only my home, but my neighborhood and this great city. I stand in front of you tonight on behalf of those who live on G and Church Street to enlighten those who may not know of the ongoing problems of the city streets and drainage systems. As most of you may know, Fourth and B Streets are some of the oldest streets in Galt, Lincoln Way as well. Seeing how G and Church Streets are in fact within the proximity of these three, two of these three streets, we can safely conclude that and agree that G Street and Church Street are also one of Galt's oldest streets. But these ongoing problems, if not corrected, will continue to cause serious issues for not only the city, but homeowners, pedestrians, and homeowners as well. My biggest concern is that G Street and a couple of surrounding roads have not been maintained and are no longer to code. In the Sacramento County Flood Plane Management Ordinance, Chapter 13, Section 13.4.3 under inlet locations, it is required that storm drain inlets be placed at the following locations: prior to all pedestrian crossings, at all traffic intersections, and at all low points in the gutter grade. At the intersection of G Street and Church Street, there's a lack of any storm drains at all. The absence of storm drains within this vicinity causes a buildup of water in gutters with no ability, no ability of allowing storm water and non-storm water to drain from the gutters, causing unwanted standing water with the possibility of flooding. With this constant occurrence of standing water along all of G and Church Street, it is causing extensive damage to the roads and sidewalks and properties of surrounding homes. Of itself, the damage of the sidewalk in front of my home is now no longer ADA compliant, not just in front of my home, but in front of several homes. These cracks and crevices along the entire sidewalk become a daily hazard to the public health and safety and welfare of those people. This will in fact lead to the possibilities of homeowners having lawsuits filed against them, as pedestrians can easily hurt themselves on the hazards. And these possibilities grow exponentially on Tuesdays and Wednesdays when people park their vehicles on G Street and walk to the flea market. All of these issues are due to the lack of storm drains. So as a citizen, a taxpayer, and a homeowner, I ask that the City of Galt file for financing to repair G and Church Streets to bring these roads up to code. I request that the proper paperwork to be filed and that these ongoing issues be resolved as soon as possible. Thank you for allowing me to concern, to give you my concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Winkler, is there anything you'd like to say to our...
We are in the process of preparing our annual pavement rehabilitation programs. As part of that, we do look at drainage needs as well as, you know, sidewalk concerns. I'm familiar with the area. I was about to up here to mention the major water leak that had been going on that we just got fixed today. But clearly, there are storm drains there because that's where all this water has been going. We had a significant leak during cold weather. We had a joint open up on one of our water mains, and it was coming up and hitting the pavement and spreading out on four quadrants of the intersection where it sort of daylighted. But it was clearly running down the storm drains. So there are storm drains in the area. Now, that doesn't mean the other concerns you have with pavement condition and sidewalk condition aren't worth reviewing, but our ordinance does, as he inferred, hold the property owner responsible for the drainage improvements. And typically, it's not drainage that causes sidewalk problems or a lack thereof, it's typically tree roots, in our experience. But we're willing to take a look at this and see if there is an opportunity now. I believe it was G Street that was recently, or Church Street that was recently overlaid a couple of years ago, so it's actually in fairly good condition. So there is a, overall, there are needs in the city, many areas similar to what we'll find at Church and G, and we try to prioritize those as we bring forward recommendations for annual CIP funding and road rehabilitation, so we'll certainly take a look at this location.
Thank you, I appreciate you at least taking a look at it.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, that was it for the speaker sheets. We'll get to the information and consent calendar. Liz, do you mind reading the three subjects on there, please?
Sure.
Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings for December 3, 2013. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. And number three, award of contracts for construction support services and construction management services related to the Central Galt Interchange Landscaping Project. Do I have a motion to approve?
Hold please. I didn't say earlier, I'd like to pull E2 real quick. Sorry, E3.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Pull E3 for discussion.
Okay. So you're up for discussion?
I'm up for discussion. I understand that we have a shortfall of about $20,000 on this, correct, Mr. Winkler?
We are, based on current estimated construction costs, there may be a shortfall. We'll know, and we don't get too excited until we actually get real-world bids. We're putting in place, or recommending we put in place, the bid support and construction management for a constructibility review so we can get it out to bid and find out where we're really going to stand on actual bid costs. But we're currently projecting there could be a shortfall, that's correct.
Any options as to how we're going to try to close that gap?
Well, depending on the size, we would look at our available money that's in our pavement rehabilitation program, and could either boot some money from our routine preventive maintenance program into a capital project, or we could also look at our other capital projects and see if there were ultimately any cost savings coming out of the Twin Cities project or others, although that project began with a shortfall, so we would have to look at, work with city manager, look at the various budgets, and come back. We are also going to put the project out to bid with a slim base bid on just what's absolutely required by our environmental mitigation from our EIR, and then have bid alternates for some of the median improvements and things, so we kind of right-size the contract based on the available funding.
Okay, thank you, sir. That was all I had.
Okay, do you want to...
Move the item?
Okay, move to accept item number three. Do I have a second? Second. Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton? Councilmember Payne?
Sorry, aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz also wrote on other two, E1 and 2. Do I have a motion to accept?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on the scheduled matters. Could you please read F1 for us, please, Liz?
Introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 15.04 of the Galt Municipal Code relating to buildings and construction and adopting the 2013 additions of the California Buildings Standard Code. Thank you. John James, the senior building inspector for the city, prepared this report, and he's here tonight to present the recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor Powers and council, and Jason, and then... Here in front of you two basically put forward the adoption of revisions to the Municipal Code for Chapter 15, which relates to building and construction. The State of California does code amend, amend every three years on a triennial basis, so by default, it would be adopted by the state, no matter what, January 1st, but this is for additional items just to maintain what we already have within the Municipal Code as far as addressing items such as electrical, food, and things like that. The biggest changes are going to be in regards to energy coming this year. They postponed it to July 1st now. But builders for single-family dwellings such as Mr. Gutridge, it's looking like a $2,800 increase with state mandated minimum requirement of what's coming up. There are some nuggets in there, though, for him where he does what's called a one-coat stuff-up system, where you see these houses wrapped with foam now before they stuff up. Previously, you would be able to get R value points for that, which means increasing your insulation, and now they're adding that into the code, so there are some fair trade-offs that, to kind of soften the blow. And then on top of that, the ADA has been adopted by the State of California prior to this year. The State of California wrote its own requirements, and this was even prior to Bush's 1990 ADA Act. And for some reason, the state continued to write their own until just this year, and now we have actually in line with the federal guidelines, which should help us more people rely. That's what we have. Any questions?
That'll just avoid a whole lot of confusion with the ADA. Yeah. That has been a real problem over the years, and I'm glad to see they did that.
Yeah, I think everybody's relieved.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's good.
Counsel, anyone else? Do I have a motion to, do you want to prepare a public hearing?
I'm going to prepare a hearing.
I'm sorry?
We have to do a public hearing outside of me.
Oh. Public hearing, we're going to open for a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on the subject? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move for approval. Second.
Can I have Liz read the recommended actions, please?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The action tonight, conduct a public hearing to receive testimony and introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Galt repealing and reenacting Chapter 15.04 of the Galt Municipal Code relating to buildings and construction and adopting by reference the 2013 California Administrative Code, California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Plumbing Code, California Mechanical Code, California Electrical Code, California Green Building Code, and California Energy Code.
And thank you, it's been moved and approved. Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now, we're at the city council office's strategic plan. And I'll just give everybody a little synopsis on what we do. Every six months, we go together, get together, the city manager, all the managers, the city council, to, to have some goals for the six months, three, six months. And I was just looking at the calendar, I'm surprised to see that January 9th is just around the corner, and we'll be doing it all over again. So, you know, if you look at this, you see there's a lot of stuff on there that gets done in six months, and we will be starting all over again, keeping a few that might have to stay on here and adding more. So we'll start with our enhanced economic development, and we're on number five, the community development director and finance director will present options to the city manager for acceptance of credit card payments for building permits and related entitlements.
Thank you. After reviewing several companies, the community development department focused its research on three companies that are among the most used by governmental agencies and do not charge cities any fees for their services. We have, there are slight variations in the different services offered and the convenience fees that are charged to whoever wants to use that service. We've prepared a memo, and that's under consideration by the finance director and the city manager at this time.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to improve financial stability and maintenance of reserves. So is there anything we wanted to, we have no colored one on there, do we? There's something?
Nothing to do with the last time we did the updating.
Okay, so nothing to be updated on that. Next is our provide services and facilities that are responsive to community needs. And the police chief, and we, is believed in the specialist, special projects administrator and public works director, working with the Consumer's Community Service District, will evaluate and update the emergency operations plan to include a shelter component to address city, community health and safety threats. And who, the chief is not here, so...
Yeah, the chief unfortunately is ill, so I'll go ahead and provide the council with an update. Police Department's been working on this, are planning on presenting some amendments or changes to the council at the next council meeting, so we actually, even though some of this information wasn't in the plan, we did open up some shelters during the cold spell that we just had, some warming centers and so forth. So one of the, I think, needs that was identified by the council when we put this together was modifying the plan to talk about warming shelters and cooling centers during the summer hot months and the winter cool months, and so we'll be making a presentation to the council, I believe, at the next council meeting on that.
Okay, thank you. And next is improve community involvement and two-way communication. The city clerk and the IT coordinator will launch the City of Galt Twitter account.
Good evening, mayor and council. The strategic plan included multiple tech-related points this year. Obviously, we've introduced a Facebook app. Obviously, we've introduced a Facebook app, and our Facebook page, and now we're on to Twitter. We brought our Twitter account live, and I'm actually going to give you a quick splash here, Steve's going to switch the page. We also have another tech relator, which is our internal staff internet, so this is just a quick splash of what the staff are going to begin seeing shortly. Looking back on Twitter there. And as you notice, here is the city's Twitter page, kind of looks a little bit similar to Facebook. As Liz posts tweets on the Twitter page, they'll cross over automatically to Facebook as well, so it's a quick avenue and quick means to get information out. It'll be a pretty short period here. We will also have a mobile app, kind of which, as well, I believe, will have the tweets coming across it. So, good news, we're making lots of progress this year.
So if somebody wants to follow us on Twitter?
They can do it.
They just type in City of Galt?
@CityofGalt.
@CityofGalt.
And it was minutes after we took it live that we had our first, I mean, literally within minutes.
Had some followers.
Had some followers, so...
And Liz is the one that's providing those updates. And usually, a couple times a week, there'll be information that is sent out to the public. So it's a good way of communicating with members of the community, either on Facebook or on Twitter. So we're getting the whole social media environment figured out, and it's a good step in the right direction as far as communicating with the public.
Okay, I hate to say this, but Naffy, you're going to have to give us a class on the Twitter stuff, because you see them all up here, giggle and giggle. I don't think any of us Twitter or tweet or whatever. Do we Twitter or do we tweet? Well, we do now, but I...
Well, I just have to say that the bird festival is coming.
Oh, okay. So we're looking forward to a class, okay? The management team, the HR lead, director lead, will develop, distribute, and collect from each of their employees a list of the City of Galt's strengths and accomplishments, internal weaknesses and problems, and potential three-tier goals for use at the January 2014 Strategic Planning Retreat.
So this is just an update. We're working with staff this month to accomplish that goal, and so we'll be able to bring information to the council when we have our retreat in January about the feedback we received from the employees.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we're on to... Community Development Department. Subject: Authorize the city manager to approve a purchase order in the amount of $35,000 to Fourleaf Incorporated for outside plan review services. And this is to use, Sandy.
Thank you. This is basically a housekeeping issue, so a couple member campions have the right instinct. The city collects a plan check fee on every building permit to pay for outside plan check services or the city's plan check services. When a consultant does it, they get 70% of the fee, the city keeps 30%. If we do it, we keep 100%. Every year, we typically bring forward a purchase order to pay for that in accordance with a procurement policy. There is no expense to the city, it's basically reimbursable. Since we didn't have much building activity for four years, this sort of fell off the radar and didn't get done this year, so we're coming back now to be consistent with procurement policy and asking approval of this purchase order.
Thank you, counsel. Any questions? comments? Would you read the recommendation, please, Liz? Authorize the city manager to approve a purchase order in the amount of $35,000 to Fourleaf Incorporated for outside plan review services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now, we're to the annual conservation easement monitoring and inspection report for the Gulf Swanson Hawk Foraging Habitat Preserve 2013 and budget change requests, budget change form request, and it's to use more housekeeping now.
This is a one-homen show tonight.
Yeah, it is.
As you know, the City of Galt owns 70 acres north of the wastewater treatment plant, is our Swanson Hawk Foraging Habitat Preserve. It's a site where the city mitigated for unavoidable impacts to foraging habitats for the hawks related to some of our city projects, like the Temple Road Interchange and Walker Park. As part of owning that preserve, the management plan is required that sets forth requirements for managing the site in perpetuity as suitable foraging habitat. The management plan is implemented by a conservation easement that covers the property. The monitor of the conservation easement is a nonprofit corporation formed for that first purpose, which is basically city council in a separate role as the Gulf Habitat Foundation. City staff provides support services to the foundation, being agreement. That includes daily management duties, as well as various administrative and accounting duties that are associated with the preserve. I'm here tonight to address one of the tasks of the management plan, which is to present an annual state of the preserve report to city council. If accepted, that report will then be forwarded to the Habitat Foundation later on this agenda, as well as to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, who's the third-party beneficiary. In addition, I'm requesting a budget change form to conduct some needed herbicide spraying on the preserve. So the first part of business is the annual report, and that's attached exhibit A to your staff report. It identifies each of the required implementation tasks and talks about the status of those for calendar year 2013. Most of the information is pretty routine, so I'm going to focus just on tabs 8.1-2 and 8.1-3. As council may recall, I came to you back in August with the findings of the biennial biologist reports that must be conducted on the site every other year. As part of that report, the biologist identified four species of invasive plant species that were present on the site and needed close control. Those were the yellow star thistle, bull thistle, prickly lettuce, and yellow tar weed. While some intermittent stands of those noxious weeds can be beneficial, they provide hiding places for the rodents so that the hawks don't overhunt. The weeds can quickly spread through the grassland to the point where the hawks can't see the rodents, and therefore, it's not efficient for foraging. So in October, I visited the site with public works staff and the city's consultants on herbicides to evaluate the most efficient and cost-effective way of addressing these invasive species. It was ultimately determined that there needs to be two separate chemical applications, one in fall, one in spring, similar to what you do for your yard. Public works staff graciously agreed to conduct the sprays for this fiscal year. The cost is estimated to be about $3,000 for the two applications. Since this expense was not known until after the biologist submitted his report, we did not budget for that. We have $900 remaining in the budget, we're asking for an additional appropriation of $2,100. There are sufficient funds and unappropriated reserves to cover this appropriation from the grazing lease payments that are done on that preserve. In future, the budgets will include estimated expenditures for ongoing weed control. So in summary, we're asking for, accept the annual report as presented, approve the $2,100 budget change form, and direct staff to forward the annual report to the Habitat Foundation and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. That concludes my report.
Vice Chair, counsel? Counselmember Cruz?
I noticed in the report, you were having an issue as far as the 24-hour release of water from the wastewater treatment plant as far as the southeast corner. Is that correct? Do we have any plans on how we can fix that, or is that just going to be a problem we have to deal with?
Yeah, access to the site's getting a little dicey because of the year-round discharge. That's kind of where the, I mean, access point was. The lease tenant has been, has found another route, and we can also get in there, it just kind of depends on weather conditions. But I have made that part of the notes that I'm leaving for my predecessor to, that's something that needs to be addressed in the future, probably.
Excellent.
Counsel, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now, we're on to consideration to participate in the Countrywide Property Assess Clean Energy Program, PACE, also known as the County of Sacramento Community Facilities District Number 2012-1, Clean Energy. Thank you, I like that we do this, so now at least people can see the sign instead of a blank sheet every time we're up here. Thank you, Liz. You're welcome.
So this is me again. Earlier this year, the County of Sacramento established a Property Assess Clean Energy Program, or PACE program, in collaboration with Y-Green Energy Fund, which is a nationwide third-party PACE administrator. The program allows property owners to voluntarily finance energy efficiency, water conservation, and renewable energy improvements, and to repay that loan through special taxes on their property bills over a set period of time, hence the name Property Assess Clean Energy. This program can reduce the upfront cost to the property owner and allows the debt associated with the improvements to be transferred with the sale of property, rather than being a continuing, ongoing obligation of the originating property owner. The basic underwriting requirements are that total indebtedness on the property can't exceed 85% of its value, and that the proposed principal amount to be financed can't exceed 10% of the property value. At this time, the county is graciously inviting incorporated cities within Sacramento County to join their program, so Galt property owners could be eligible to participate if they so desire. Citizen Heights and Alt Road have already joined the county's program. They've adopted resolutions to annex city land to the county's community facilities district established exclusively for this purpose. City of Sacramento has its own separate PACE program, also run by Y-Green, so they're obviously not interested. As city council might recall, the city is already participating in another PACE program, known as California First. We joined that program in 2010. However, that program is still restricted to just commercial, industrial, and multifamily properties. It does not have a single-family residential component because of certain inherent risks associated with residential PACE programs. Consequently, there's no residential PACE program unless the city joins the county's program tonight and agrees to accept some of those risks. Staff is recommending the council join the program despite the risk, because we think there are benefits that outweigh those risks. So the potential risks to the city really stem from a 2010 statement from Farmers Home or Federal Housing Finance Agency, who regulates a large percentage of single-family home loans, such as Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. The FHFA statement says that PACE financing would pose substantial risks to home lenders because the loans are considered special taxes, and as such, they result in a priority lien over existing mortgages. In other words, there was a future foreclosure. FHFA is afraid that since special taxes get recovered first, that they would possibly not recover their full loan amount on a house. They further cited concerns about underwriting requirements for PACE programs and the absence of other consumer protections. Most concerning was that FHFA also threatened that if communities proceed with PACE programs, it would direct Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac to redline those communities. In other words, they would basically tighten loan-to-value ratios and make local income criteria more stringent as a sort of punishment to a community for adopting a PACE program. This action effectively stopped residential PACE programs from proceeding back in 2010 in most California jurisdictions, including Galt, under California First. The California Attorney General and a variety of other cities and counties ultimately filed suit against FHFA to try and reverse this action, but the U.S. Ninth Circuit Appeals has since ruled that FHFA was acting as a conservator of the public good, and their statement remains in effect. Despite FHFA's stance on PACE programs, that county decided to join with a number of other jurisdictions who've already adopted residential PACE programs. These include City of Sacramento, Westside Riverside, Western Riverside Council of Governments that has about 62 participating jurisdictions, Platter County, and Sonoma County. These programs combined have about 6,500 applications totaling over $1.3 billion in PACE loans. On the other hand, there are still several jurisdictions who have suspended or abandoned their residential programs specifically because of the FHFA ruling. That includes San Francisco, Santa Clara County, San Diego County, Berkeley, and several jurisdictions under the California First program. On a positive note, Governor Brown sent a letter to FHFA in September, basically outlining a proposed solution to the problem that would involve a reserve fund, that would promise to make Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac whole in case of a foreclosure on a PACE loan program. They have $10 million available for that purpose, and I'm told that draft regulations to establish that program are expected in early 2014. So it's hopeful that will address FHFA's concern once and for all if it is implemented. California First, I talked to them, they're also planning a residential PACE program, but they are waiting until Governor Brown's proposal is acted upon, so they don't want to assume that the risks that the others are taking. So I've attempted to summarize the potential risks and benefits of joining a residential PACE program in the staff report. As I noted before, the main risk to the city is that the economy could be adversely affected if FHFA decides to redline all borrowers and direct lenders to increase the loan-to-value ratios and debt-to-income ratios. Sacramento County's risk management also expressed concern in their staff report on their program, that if such a scenario occurred, there could be potential liability to the city if, from a class action litigation. Someone could basically say that the city participated in a residential PACE program despite, or with pre-existing knowledge of FHFA's opposition, so if the community did get redlined and they were adversely affected, they could file a class action suit. The main risk to a participating property owner is that his or her existing mortgage lender could contend that participation in a PACE program violates the loan agreement, and they could require removal of the special tax lien by prepaying the special tax obligation, probably in case of a refinancing or a sale. The county's program does include measures to mitigate for some of these inherent risks. They've got some disclosure and release of liability provisions built into the paperwork that someone must go through. They require the property owner to notify the lender of their intended participation in the program. It doesn't require their consent, it just requires notification, and then they have the sole responsibility to deal with the lender to resolve any disputes that may arise. Since the program's voluntary to the property owner and it's administered through the county, there's no real liability to the city for that particular risk of a lender having an On a positive note, PACE programs can also provide a number of benefits to this community. It reduces financial hurdles to increase energy efficiency, it can reduce greenhouse gas emissions, it contributes to global warming, it can typically reduce utility costs for participating property owners, they can do 100% financing for efficiency improvements, generates jobs, and can increase the assessed value of participating properties. So the county's PACE program manager, Bob Davidson, is in attendance tonight to help answer any questions council may have. As noted in the recommendation, the city can opt into the program by simply adopting the attached resolution. Staff is recommending that council adopt the resolution and participate in the program despite the risks. And at this point, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Counsel?
Is FHFA's main concern that this tax, because it is a MELRUS tax, is added after the loan and not included within the, I guess, original consideration of the mortgage? Because I see no difference between a MELRUS for public works or schools and a MELRUS for energy. I mean, it's just a, it's a finance mechanism that's utilized to pay for a type of improvement. So I guess, I don't know, I'm looking at Sandy and I see this...
Yeah. My understanding is that one of the FHFA's concerns is that they don't consider the energy efficiency improvements to be a legitimate government purpose, like other special taxes.
That fall under the...
It's more of a, you know, homeowner desire to own some of the property, but all that budget, and maybe...
Yeah, maybe you could provide some clarification, because if it qualifies for MELRUS, I mean, there had to be a provision under MELRUS to allow for this type of activity. Is that correct?
Sure. Bob Davidson, County of Sacramento, county engineer. So you are correct. One of the concerns of the FHFA was that these liens are senior to mortgage loans, and the timing of them is different, because most MELRUS, as you suggested, were, are there before the mortgage gets there.
Right.
This is a MELRUS tax that happens after that.
Okay.
And so, whereas when loans are underwritten for most MELRUS taxes, they happen before the mortgage is there, this one happens after, and FHFA took what's concerned that this lien was senior to mortgage loans.
Well, wouldn't this, wouldn't the prior MELRUS also be senior to the mortgage loan?
Yes, it would.
So it's simply another tax that is senior, but one that they didn't foresee? Fred. Oh, well, this is frustrating.
Yeah, aye, Barbara.
What would be the problem with waiting until we see if Governor Brown steps up to conserve?
That would be a policy decision for your counsel. That would be a policy decision for your counsel.
It's certainly an option. We could certainly opt into the program at a later date.
Okay.
You know, I disagree with that, though. I think that the property owner, it's up to the property owner to make that choice. You know, the city is simply providing a mechanism for them to finance energy efficiency in their home. Now, they also would have full disclosure as to whether they, if they go to sell or refinance, they may have to pay that out maybe with a, you know, home equity loan rather than being paid as a special tax as part of their property taxes. But I think it's a great program, but it, I don't think we should be making that decision or determine that level of risk. I think it should be up to the property owner.
Right.
This is simply a program that's available to them.
How...
Go ahead.
But according to the risk, the city would be possibly liable. That's my understanding.
Well, may I point out, it's true that the risk is unquantifiable, you know, whether the risk is to the county because of the county's program or whether the risk is to the city of Gulf, you know, I can't necessarily speak to that. But what I can tell you is that the county board weighed these same risks. County staff worked on program, as was indicated, added extra measures. One measure that was added, when the county considered whether to enact the residential component, one measure that was added was should FHFA take action or be poised to take action, that basically the contract would be pulled back and that the residential PACE program would cease. No one can say that that completely takes the risk away, but, you know, one aspect of the question was that FHFA would take action over an entity that voluntarily pulled the program back because FHFA was taking action. So those extra provisions were added when the board considered the residential component and then the board certainly authorized the residential component.
And that would also affect Gulf as a participating agency?
Absolutely.
So if the county were to take that action, then the city of Gulf would also receive the benefit of pulling back, so to speak?
Yes, we wouldn't leave the residential component in Gulf and take it from the county. Basically, any cities that opt into the program are opting into the program as written. So if, right now, we have a contract with our PACE administrator, that contract says if FHFA takes action or threatens to take action, the residential component will be pulled back.
If... If you want me to...
Would the commercial program move forward?
So if, under the amendment to the contract, which actually was just signed today, yes, the contract says that, you know, we can certainly pull the residential portion back if FHFA takes action, but that would not affect the commercial.
Commercial.
For the moment.
Can I just ask a real quick question, too? What are the dollar amounts that homeowners are given in, or is there a...
It's, and it was talked about, ten percent of the value of the property, eighty-five percent, you can't participate in the program if you don't have eighty-five percent loan-to-value or better. So the dollar amounts vary. I mean, I know people personally who receive mailing, you know, based on that criteria. I know someone who's eligible for a hundred thousand dollars in improvements, another person who's eligible for sixty thousand dollars in improvements, but that's going to vary depending on, you know, your loan-to-value and value of your property.
I might also point out that this program includes both residential and non-residential. Kevin AAA knows and is in the audience with Softcom, who had sort of started down inadvertently, got a mailer from City of Sacramento who had a similar program, and he kind of got through the net and started down the program, and I think he might have some comments that he wishes to add about the commercial aspect of the PACE program that's different from the California First program.
But I think what I just heard was they could be considered separately, or they would be considered separately.
No, I, just to, that's a good question, and to clarify, the program that the county has enacted is a residential and commercial PACE program. The county at one time considered not enacting the residential component, but that's been fully vetted out and the county enacted a program that's a commercial and a residential. The county allows the cities to opt into that program, but what we don't have is a menu that cities can opt into part of the program. Potentially, it would be possible to do that, likely we would have to go back to the county board supervisors for policy direction, and then the program administrator would be able to type in on that as well. But what we do have is a provision in the contract that says if FHFA takes action, then the county would pull back the residential component, and then you would have a commercial-only program at that point in time.
But you have no guarantee that the federal government would go along with your plan to pull back without being somehow...
Punitive.
Flapped on, yeah.
Certainly, I could not provide you such a guarantee.
And I'm sorry, Sandy, when did the governor want to have something in place?
The rulemaking, they have to go through the federal rulemaking process for this. I'm told by that agency that they're going to start that in early 2014. California First administrators felt that that was going to happen fairly quickly in 2014, so that's why they were waiting. I don't know for sure, it probably depends how long down it gets in the rulemaking process. That's a big question.
How would this directly affect first-time homebuyers since they would be tightening up the financial portion? If it was implemented?
Well, it comes back.
Wouldn't affect them, would only affect...
It shouldn't affect them because you have to own the home first in order to get the improvement.
What I understand, though, is what you were telling me was that FHFA would tighten things up if it was implemented, correct? So if I'm a first-time homebuyer, are you telling me that it wouldn't affect me at all?
Well, that involves the risk, you're right, that if FHFA decided to penalize communities, including Gulf, and decided to redline the city because we had participated in the program, then it potentially could affect people looking for mortgages later on because the criteria is going to be that much more stringent.
But isn't that the type of action that the county would then pull back on the residential? So in effect, until that happens, it wouldn't affect first-time homebuyers, effectively?
Correct. That is one of the actions that the county would certainly deem as FHFA threatening to implement its threatened actions and thereby with the contract amendments would pull the program back.
So if this plan is just a threat, it's their way of a scare tactic.
So why did the county not decide to hold off a little bit and see if we can avoid the risk of what the government can do to us?
Well, that was certainly a policy question for the county to consider, and much like your counsel has considered that tonight, the county board weighed those options, weighed the benefits and the risks of the program, and decided to move forward with the unrestricted residential program.
If I understand that the risk, it would be by a third party bringing suit against the city or county for causing the redline and therefore, I guess, some form of discrimination in terms of loans. If the remedy is that is pulled back, then that's the remedy. So therefore, you know, I'm not an attorney, but I mean, that would appear to me that would solve the, could be a solution to what the problem is, correct?
Yes, I think it is. And, you know, when I looked at this, because of the city's role in the program, I think that the exposure to the city by participating in this program is very small, and I think that the more significant concern is whether or not it would have any impact on the private lending market because of FHFA's response. But if there was a response and the county did not withdraw the residential portion of the program, then I think the city at that point, if we desired, would have the ability to withdraw from future participation in this program at that point.
So we have options if we implement.
Do you want to read the resolution, please, Liz?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The recommended action, adopt a resolution authorizing the City of Gulf to join the countywide Property Assess Clean Energy Program, PACE, by granting the annexation of lands with the territorial jurisdiction of the city to the Sacramento Community Facilities District, number 2012-1.
I move.
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
No, I'm not willing to take that vote.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Reluctant, but aye.
Mayor Powers?
I'm going to say no also.
Okay. Pass three. Thank you. Now, we're at the Human Resources Department. The subject is to request to waive the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, one-hundred-and-eighty-day waiting period to hire retired inuitants to perform duties. That's you, Paula.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. The request before you tonight is just that, to bring back a retired inuitant, she's not retired yet, but she will be shortly, and as it states in the report, as of January 1st, 2013, the Public Employee Pension Reform Act had quite a few new rules and guidelines, and one of them is that employees that retire are not allowed to come back to work for six months unless you're a safety officer. There are certain situations, such as the one that we're presenting tonight, that without doing so would cause a hardship to the city and the department, so we're asking counsel to approve the request to bring back Kathy Combe after she retires to help with the transition into, you know, her new community development director and also train the current employees on some of the tracking and programs that she is basically the only, not the only person, but she's likely expert in that area, so she'll be able to bring everybody else back up to speed. Any questions, counsel?
Okay. Call for, can you read the recommended action, please, Liz?
Okay. Adopt a resolution waiving the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, one-hundred-and-eighty-day waiting period to hire retired inuitants Kathy Combe to perform critical administrative assistant duties on a limited basis in fiscal year 2014.
Do I have a...
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're at the Public Works Department. Approval of supplemental funding for demolition of the building located at 405 Fifth Street to J.C. Hall. Please.
Sandy, did you want to make this presentation? Madam Mayor, this next item is a request for approval of eighteen thousand dollars in supplemental funding for demolition of the J.C. Hall building. Unfortunately, despite an initial visual assessment performed to identify potential hazardous materials prior to bidding, lead-based paint has been found on the exterior walls of the building hidden under the exposed vinyl siding. Removal disposal of the underlayment with lead-based paint will require special handling and disposal at a hazardous waste facility at an estimated supplemental cost of up to sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Now, obvious question would be, well, why wasn't the lead-based paint found during the initial pre-bid inspection? And my best answer would be that, well, we would have hoped that it would be. However, the sixteen hundred dollar assessment fee that we paid or recommissioned only included a visual inspection of the interior and exterior of the building along with testing of suspect materials and recommendations for proper abatement that were visually observable. We did not require that they do any destructive investigation of what might lie under the wallboard or within the floors or within the walls, et cetera. In hindsight, it certainly would have been advantageous to spend a little more on the front end to include spot checking the substrate under the vinyl siding in a building this age, and that's a lesson learned, certainly. The bottom line, however, is that this additional, had this additional testing been done, the original bids would have reflected the increased cost for proper abatement and disposal. This, in turn, would have given the council an opportunity to consider whether to proceed the demolition at this escalated price. I do believe that the pricing proposal for the supplemental lead abatement is reasonable and competitive. The contractor has consistently provided very low bid and competitive pricing on previous demolitions for the city and has not been looking for unreasonable extra costs. And at this juncture, we're approximately eighty-five hundred dollars into the project, which is about halfway, and that was for the interior abatement that's already been completed. An option to the council could be to just cut our losses and stop. At this point, however, we would still have a blighted building and costs are likely to increase in the future. Another option would be to terminate the contract and go back out to bid and ensure we had competitive pricing. This leaves some question as to the full extent of, is the entire exterior done lead-based paint until we pull the siding? We don't know for sure, although we suspect that is the case. So there's sort of a variety of options here. We could have the current contract, go ahead and remove the vinyl siding, then we could observe what was on the rest of the building, and then we could make further decisions. My best recommendation to you tonight, based on the pricing proposal that Park Specialties has given us, which is a timing of materials, so basically we'll only pay for what we get, and they have agreed to count that at a maximum of sixteen thousand five hundred, where they take the risk for any additional costs that we run into, we'd recommend that we go ahead and proceed and finish the project, and as part of that, the actual recommendation is giving eighteen thousand dollars in supplemental funding, which will leave us with a small contingency if something else were to come up.
Questions, counsel?
That was my biggest question, is they're not going to be coming back as to saying, oh, we found more than we expected? They will absorb that difference if they, do you find such a thing?
For the exterior lead-based paint, that's an out-the-door maximum not to exceed. If we were to, when they're demolishing the foundation, plant an underground oil tank or something, that would be off the...
I got to be honest, what irritates me the most about this is if you have lead-based paint on the inside, you got a pretty good chance of on the outside also, and they should have thought about that.
Well, in hindsight, I think we could have done a better job on the front end.
Doesn't change total costs.
But you still would have to...
Yeah, you still got to deal with it.
At least you'd have the opportunity to make a business decision up front, I certainly agree with that.
None of the alternatives appear good. You don't want to leave the building, and you've got to deal with it, so...
Yep. But if they're willing to do that, absorb that if there's an excessive cost, hey, I'm good with it. I just don't want them coming back.
Well, it will not come back for lead-based paint if we find something else.
It might be an underground tank or, you know...
We think that's unlikely.
Yeah. It's hard with those old buildings to know what you're going to get into. I mean, it happens anytime, anyplace when things are old like that.
Remodels, remodels and demolitions are always suspects for surprises, living in a hundred and twenty-year-old home, undergoing a lot of remodeling, it's just always a surprise which...
And if they do find something else, we're still going to have to deal with it.
Yeah.
May I?
Yes, you may. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Good. Mr. Winkle, I got to tell you, I'm a little upset at this, okay? And it's not focused on you. The first visual inspection, and this is, I'm going to make a recommendation, the staff come back with something. Well, I'll just say it now, I think in buildings, especially in Gulf, because they have a lot of older buildings, I would like staff to consider buildings that are twenty years older or older, that they don't just go look at them and go, okay, yeah, we can do that for fifteen hundred dollars. That we go take the extra effort to make sure that we don't have any kind of lead-based paint, arsenic, because now we're looking at another eighteen thousand dollars that could have been put to use somewhere else in the city. And if council had known this in the beginning, maybe we would have figured out some other alternatives, not that there's many because it's not structurally sound, but at least we know budget-wise, we would be spending on demolishing a building that's an additional eighteen hundred dollars as opposed to the original cost we were looking at. So if, if staff could consider something like that, I think it would be a good policy or that we could take the extra mile in buildings that are that old, because we do have a few downtown, such as where we want to do the theater, that might present some issues that we want to look at before we dive into it, so we know exactly what we're getting into.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, are you good? Or no? Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I'm almost done with that area, but... So, this costs us twice as much, so... And what, six hundred and twelve dollars for advertising, what did we advertise in the Galt Herald on that?
Yeah, the call for bids. We, at this price level, the city's procurement manual allows us to do informal bidding, where we don't have to go out to the whole world, provided that we advertise it in a local paper, general circulation.
How long did that run?
I believe we have to advertise it twice. I have to double-check that.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler, appreciate it.
Okay, I just want to say a few things to reiterate that you already said that this probably won't happen again. Hindsight is better than, you know, and one way or the other, it's gonna cost, we did agree to get rid of the building, and, you know, there is lead paint, and one way or the other was gonna cost us the additional eighteen grand anyway, so, that's why it's a shame. Anyone else? Hey, do I have a motion?
I believe the recommendation.
Second.
Call for the vote. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to adjourn to the Galt Habitat Foundation. Roll call, please, Liz. Board members Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Campion?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
The public comments?
I have no secret seats.
There's nothing on the information and consent agenda, so we're taking these two things separately, Liz? Yes. Okay, the first is, accept the minutes of the March fifth, two thousand and thirteen meeting.
Who takes that?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote. Board members Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
And then, second is the annual conservation easement monitoring and inspection report for the Galt Swanson Soft Foraging Habitat Preserve, two thousand and thirteen, and notification of personnel change.
Thank you. You already heard most of this information as Galt City Council, but the requested action for this item is slightly different, because the board of directors has a different function than city council. So, the first order of business is to ask the board to receive the annual reports that city council approved. I'm also asking that you acknowledge that this annual report, together with the previously submitted biennial biologist report, meet the content requirements of the required biennial reports to the board of directors, so that we don't have to do a separate biennial report per task E point one dash one of the management plan. The second order of business is to ask that the board accept the attached written notification of a personnel change to the officers of the foundation and designate a replacement. This action is required by one of the bylaws of the Galt Habitat Foundation, as well as one of the tasks of the management plan. As community development director, I'm currently the vice president of the Galt Habitat Foundation. I'm responsible for most of the daily management duties of the preserve, including all these exciting annual and biannual reports. Since I'm retiring at the end of this month, the board will need to designate a replacement. Staff's recommending that the new community development director simply assume the duties of the vice president when he or she is hired. During the interim period, the staff member who will be the acting community development director will be responsible, who is the senior planner for those duties. To fulfill the requirements of management plan, the outgoing director must also arrange a meeting with the incoming director to discuss the duties, and to tour the preserve, or we can convey that information to the acting person, and then they convey it to the subsequent director. I'm open for either option, if the new director wants to meet, I'd be happy to do that. We're also required to advise the Department of Fish and Wildlife of a change in personnel, and to offer to meet with them at the preserve to discuss that transition. So, that concludes my report.
Okay, do we need to...
I just want to ask, Sandy, at this point, do we need to notify the Department of, whatever word you said, wildlife?
Fish and wildlife. Fish and wildlife.
It will be done when I transmit this report to them. I will also do the notification, if the board accepts the recommendation.
You need to read the recommendation again. Okay, I'm gonna have Liz just read the recommendation again, and then we'll have a...
Okay, the recommended actions. Number one, receive the two thousand and thirteen annual conservation easement monitoring and inspection report approved by the Galt City Council, to serve as the biannual report required by the management plan. And number two, accept written notification of a personnel officer change, community development director, vice president of the Galt Habitat Foundation, and direct staff to fill the vacant position with acting community development senior planner temporarily, and then transfer the responsibility to the new community development director when that person is hired.
We got it, everybody?
So, move.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Board members Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council, and that's actually the city clerk, the city clerk. Liz?
Just a few reminders. Advocation committee on December nineteenth has been canceled. The city offices will be closed on December twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth in observance of the Christmas holidays. On December twenty-sixth, the Commission on Aging has been canceled, and city offices will be closed on January first, New Year's Day, which takes us to the next meeting of the city council, except that I skipped, I'm sorry. On January sixth, there's a Galt Youth Committee meeting at six P.M. in the council chambers, and that takes us to our next city council meeting.
January seventh. Okay. Now, we're at the comments by staff.
I have no comments, I don't know. Anybody else does, Steve?
Just pleased to report that we did successfully get the Highway ninety-nine off-ramp between the city's road to West Stockton Boulevard reopened in public traffic, I believe, this morning.
And good job on that.
Merry Christmas.
It's a very good job on that. I've heard nothing but positive stuff, even to the little inconvenience of asking to get off the walnut, they know, and most people know it for the better, and they're happy about it. Okay, so now we're at city council members. Shall we, who wants to go first?
I will.
Okay.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank all those that participated in the light of the night. The school were fantastic, the bell of fire, everybody, it was just great, had a good turnout. Once again, I have to thank our youth for coming out and helping on Saturday, and then getting up the next morning at seven o'clock to do crafting with Santa. So, it was a great community weekend, and we're all proud.
Yeah, I know. Lot of stuff going on last week.
Yeah.
Councilman, Vice Mayor Singleton?
Yes, I have a few things. First of all, I want to thank publicly our city clerk for going out and retrieving more candy that three council members that went, one trailer, were running low on. And, but we did have a good time at that, I think we were all kind of chuckling away and Kurt...
It was a little cold.
It was a little cold.
It was a little cold.
But we, I love going out and seeing these little kids out there, and the parents out with their little kids, it's just, it's the greatest thing, I love doing it. Also, I had the pleasure of being at the Galt Senior Luncheon yesterday, and the choir from the Fair Sight School came over and sang for us. These are preschoolers, and I think Kurt, you were, took pictures, I believe, didn't you?
I was taking videos.
Videos, yeah. And was that not the kids' thing?
That's pretty nice.
Yeah, those kids, maybe it's just because I'm a grandpa, and I'm getting a big heart or something, I don't know, I just, I love seeing the little kids, just enjoying themselves. Some more serious stuff. At our LAFCO meeting earlier this month, actually on November sixth, some may or may not know that Elk Grove was denied their application for expanding their S.O.I. So, before it came to final vote with the LAFCO commission, Elk Grove had decided to pull their application for seven thousand eight hundred sixty-nine acres that they wanted on the south side of Cammer and Grantline Road. So, what this means is that they can reapply that application at a later date. I will keep you advised as I can. I also, this last meeting, I was appointed to being chairman of LAFCO, I will be in that chair for approximately a year, and then we'll move on to another city. That's all I have, I had a great, great time with the parade. Thank you to all the floats and people who took time out to decorate their trailers and cars and semis, it's just a great event, I love doing it every year. And have a great and safe Christmas. Thank you.
Well, I want to congratulate you on being chairman of LAFCO, and to say that I just don't really understand how you spend all that time and minutes and everything else on LAFCO, and then at the last minute, pull.
You're not the only one.
Doesn't make sense to me, but...
Yeah, you're not the only one.
That's the way it goes, I guess. Councilmember Campion?
I have nothing specific, what is already been talked about, I just reiterate, and the city holiday.
Thank you, Kurt, I had a great time with you in the trailer, and Mark, I really had a good time with you.
Councilmember Cruz?
I would, yes, I know you mentioned the senior clubs luncheon, because the previous Thursday, we had the ECP senior lunch, and that was a blast, it always is, had a lot of fun there.
I've been sick, I can't keep them straight.
Had a great time, we always do, thank you for putting that on, and for all the people that are involved in it. Also, big thank you to Sandy, I've known you since I've been with the city, we've had a blast, pun intended. Many won't understand that, but she and I do. Other than that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season, Merry Christmas. I know people say it's not PC, tough cookies, Merry Christmas, and have a Happy New Year.
Well, thank you, and thank you for bringing up the senior luncheon, I didn't want to have to toot my own horn, but I did, I did want to thank all of the staff and city manager and city council for coming, you make a lot of seniors happy on that day, and it was a lot of fun. And looking forward to two thousand and fourteen, and tell you, Sandy, for the short time that I've had the pleasure of knowing you, I'm really gonna miss you. We've had a couple of car rides together, and discussions on life in general, and you've done a great job for the city, and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you back here next year.
Wait, one more, I just want to publicly, I don't think I finished saying it, Liz, you're the one I want to thank for getting up and going and getting that candy.
You did say.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody realizes.
You heard it.
Because I think I said city clerk, and maybe everybody doesn't know the city clerk.
You're welcome.
(laughing)[201.12]